Levels ones, twos, threes, and fours, and bilingual, and puts it into context for the Watford Public Schools. What this slide does is it matches up the service hours as outlined by the Connecticut State Department of Education and the Office of Civil Rights from the previous slide with our actual student population here in Watford. These are projected service hours by building next year. So you can see we're projecting at Great Neck next year. Twenty-four students who will require somewhere between thirty-four and a hundred hours of service. Asagachi, you can see servicing thirty-eight students needing somewhere between forty-nine and a hundred and forty hours a week. Quaker Hills, thirty-nine students will require somewhere between fifty to a hundred and fifty service hours next year. And Clark Lane in the high school roughly coming in the same between eighteen and sixty hours. So you're probably saying, how do we provide a hundred and forty-three hours of service in some of these schools where we have one teacher? Well, that's done in a variety of ways. Service hours can be partially met by services provided by the classroom teacher. For those of you who attended the elected officials tour, we were up at Quaker Hill School. We went through, was that a first or second grade classroom?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten classroom. We saw that kindergarten teacher who had two or three different reading groups going on, and the classroom teacher was working with an ML student who spoke nearly no English and only spoke Mandarin. Those service hours that that classroom teacher provided gets baked into this hundred and forty-three. The other ways that we are attempting to meet, this is within push-in services where our ML or T-Sol teachers, to use the right terminology, push into the classroom, and they also pull out students in small groups. Clustering at the elementary level makes this a little more doable than the secondary level. If we have four or five ML learners at a particular grade level, we attempt to put them in one, at most two classrooms, because that cuts down on the number of places. This gets much more challenging at the secondary level where students have different schedules. My daily schedule in a middle school or a high school will look very different than the next person's, and you're not really able to cluster as effectively as you are at the elementary. Nobody's fault, it's just the realities of a middle school and high school schedule. So as we look at these service hours projected for next year, and we look at the current programming for the FY twenty-five year as compared to what this budget proposes for FY twenty-six. So currently in this current school year at Great Neck, we have a two-tenths bilingual teacher, which you've heard about last month, as well as a full-time ML tutor. Next year, if this budget were to be, you know, passed through the next ensuing three, four months of the budget process, we would have a full-time bilingual T-Sol teacher at Great Neck along with a full-time tutor. And you can see for Asagachi, they would go from an eight-tenths T-Sol teacher this year to a full-time teacher and a full-time tutor next year. Quaker Hill goes from one to one and one, and you can see the increases at the secondary level. When you look at the service hours required, it will become next to impossible, I don't want to say impossible because anything's possible, but it will become very difficult as our numbers continue to increase in these service hours to meet the needs of students with our current staffing level. Hence the proposal and the reutilization of existing FTEs where I pointed out, reduce it to high school and reinvest it elsewhere in the district. As we move on to support services, there's really no major changes in support services. What you see on this slide is the proposing of an additional IT employee in FY twenty-six at a cost of sixty thousand. This is a brand-new position, new proposal. As the number of devices has increased from the pandemic until now, where we shifted from X number of devices to a full one-to-one model, the complexity of the tech environment from logistics and cybersecurity standpoint has increased, the complexity has increased a lot. We are proposing an additional employee on our tech team to support a number of key areas. This position would include a focus on Power School, which is our main piece of software. It's called our Student Information System that handles attendance, registration, all of our student data, courses, and all of that information that gets uploaded to the state. It will also support ClassLink, which is our single sign-on platform. And I know you're going to have questions, and Mark is here later on. But that's a key piece of software. As you know, from the software budget, we have dozens and dozens of pieces of software that both staff and students utilize each day in our schools. What ClassLink does is aggregate all of those pieces so a child or a staff member sign in once, and they see their dashboard of offerings in front of them. More support is needed in IT to continue to support our robust tech environment. And as I said, Mark is here tonight, and I know he'll be happy to elaborate on this role later on. Under Support Services, this is contractual increases for all non-certified support staff employees. There are no changes in staffing levels beyond the IT position. Thought this would be helpful, and this was asked for by the Board of Ed Finance Subcommittee during the Finance Committee meetings in January, I believe. When we look at a salary increase next year, what this slide breaks down is how much of that salary increase is attributed to a general wage increase, which obviously happens through contractual salary negotiations with our various unions. How much of the contractual salary increases are due to step, lane, and degree changes? So some of our unions have steps where people could go from step four to step five, or they might go from a bachelor's lane to a master's lane or sixth-year lane, and then people inevitably get new degrees through the course of their career. So that's the second line down. The third line down is turnover in new positions. So turnover would be employee X retired last June, we budgeted seventy thousand, we hired at sixty-five thousand, or we hired at eighty-five thousand. And then any, the reflection of any of the new positions such as the ML tutors and the IT position. And then the fourth line down are changes in grants. So this slide really breaks down what that salary increases. So the GWI accounts for roughly a million-dollar increase year over year. Step, lane, and degree changes account for roughly three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Turnover in new positions, roughly a hundred and sixty-four thousand. And we see roughly fifty thousand dollars in loss of grant funds. So I thought that was a great ask of the Finance Subcommittee in terms of how that gets broken down each year. Employee benefits, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, health insurance is a significant driver in this budget, increasing year over year roughly one point, just under one-point-seven-million dollars. Watford is self-insured. What that means is we, in collaboration with the town, we self-insure ourselves, which means we pay for our own claims. So we, our budget each year is, takes a look back of twelve to eighteen months of our claims history. If claims were great, you might see a very modest increase. If claims are higher than expected, you're going to see a large increase. So we're seeing over a twenty percent increase in the cost of health insurance year over year, roughly one-point-six-six million. On the FICA line, that's reflective of our staff count and salaries each year. It is a little higher than normal due to the settlement of the paraprofessionals contract, where there was a raise in their salaries, so that's why FICA might seem a little higher than some of the previous years. All of the rates, all other lines in this area reflect rate and contractual obligations, reimbursements such as uniform allowances or tuition reimbursement. Workers' comp number comes from our carrier, and then we see a savings of over a hundred and hundred thousand dollars because of the low number of retirements. But that also means you don't capture some of that savings in salary. So we see unused sick leave and retirement incentives, some favorability because of the low number of retirees, but then you don't capture that back on the salary line. On contracted services, we do see a savings to shifting health services brought in-house. You'll recall a year ago that, at this time, we informed the board that VNA was stepping away from providing school nursing services. We have a year of experience now bringing that in-house. We employ six of our own nurses, four health aides, and we split a nursing supervisor with the town of Eastline, the Eastline Board of Education. So we'll see, we're able to bring down line three-thirty, other professional technical services because of that reason. Legal services is up slightly as we enter negotiations with three unions for the FY twenty-six year. On transportation, you'll recall that this current fiscal year is the last year of our current contract for buses. We have gone out to bid, we have budgeted a placeholder, and hope to have more information later this month. Hopefully by final action, we'll be able to let you know if we're able to bring that line down from what we budgeted for an increase, or if bids came in higher than the placeholder we put in and that we need to increase that line. The rest of this slide on transportation supplies reflects rate and usage and market rates and the cost of diesel, so some modest decreases there on diesel and fuel. Other insurances the district has to have, fire, property liability, and other insurances, those are rate-driven by our carrier. Communications, really based on usage and rates. We were able to bring down five thirty-one postage and five forty advertising to better align with actual trend data. Tuition, this represents the tuition we pay to public and private special education programs that our students attend and Watford students who attend magnet and charter schools. While there are rate increases on students already in outplacements, we are projecting less students in outplacements next year and less students needing special ed services at magnets and charters. Couple this with our continued effort to build high-quality in-district programs, we were able to bring down our tuition lines, again primarily due to special ed program. If you were able to attend the elected officials tour last month, we highlighted some of these in-house special ed programs when visiting Quaker Hill School. Other purchase services, we do see some increases in rates. As we get further away from the pandemic, we are seeing more staff engage in professional development outside the district, and those costs have increased. Hence some modest increases on traveling conferences and contracted services. Instructional supplies, there's a modest increase for three reasons here. This has been held relatively flat for the last four budget cycles as we've seen pressure points in other areas of the district. But this year, we do see modest increases due to inflation, an investment in the cost of food supplies for our culinary program. As you know, you're seeing, you're paying more at the grocery store, well, so are we to support our culinary programs. And every two to three years, we have to re-up our licensing for talented and gifted testing, which is mandated by state law. So while it was zero last year, it's four thousand dollars next year. I can tell you, as I said in the beginning, we cut many, many requests from staff and principals in six-eleven to help mitigate budget pressure points in other areas of the budget in the tens of thousands, if not over a hundred thousand. On software, these increases, the increase in software of sixty-nine and change falls into a couple of areas. We did reduce thirty-four thousand dollars in software. We do evaluate that every single year. One of the benefits of ClassLink, which is that single sign-on platform where kids log in and then pick the software from there, provides us with great usage statistics, and we were able to reduce software that we no longer use by thirty-four thousand dollars. Long-term renewals, we signed two, three, four, five-year software contracts to save money. Those came in less than the previous year, hence a reduction of about six thousand dollars in long-term renewals. We do see sixty-one thousand dollars of rate increases on existing products, and new products to address various aspects of the organization are up forty-nine thousand dollars. This slide, a little more detail on the software breakdown, again, credit to the Board of Ed Finance Subcommittee. The genesis of this slide came from those meetings last month. We were asked to put together a slide illustrating the various categories of software needed to run the district. As you can see from this slide, about twenty-four percent of the software is student-facing. The rest of it is really operational to run the rest of the district. We spend about twenty-five thousand dollars a year on various student assessment software, things like Ainsweb, iReady, MAP. Those are interim benchmark assessments that teachers give. They get the data, they say, well, Tom needs a little more work in this area, Joy, not so much. Curriculum-related software, things like online textbooks, other software, Seesaw, which is like Google Classroom for lower grades, Edge Newity, which is an online credit recovery program, and Lexi, your reading, and there are many more, or not many more, there are more than what's listed. These are examples. Cybersecurity, things like multi-factor authentication, a firewall, a content filter, disaster recovery software, much of that newly mandated over the last several years by our insurance company. And then you see other operating system software, things like licensing for Wi-Fi, single sign-on, as I mentioned, ClassLink, school system software, which is our financial software, the software to run budget meetings, do background checks, control our copiers, Power School, which is our student information system, modest budget for special education software, and then you have some student safety software, which we've talked about in previous years, Gagol, our security camera system, visitor check-in software, things of that nature. So this slide provides a breakdown of that. It is a hefty investment each and every year, but hopefully this provides a little more clarity where that software money is spent. Operation and maintenance of buildings, we see increases in water and sewer based on trend analysis and increases in rate. On six thirteen, which is maintenance supplies, this is really to reflect trend and inflation. Our buildings are aging. Some of our buildings are approaching the twenty-year mark, and things break and need to be repaired or replaced. I'll give you an example that kind of shows. We had an elevator issue in one of our schools over the summer, unbudgeted forty thousand-dollar repair just last week up at Quaker Hill, and a key HVAC component of the Quaker Hill HVAC system failed, and we had to purchase parts and labor totaling almost forty thousand dollars to fix that. We have a strong preventive maintenance program. We maintain our systems, but when you get twenty-plus-year-old, think about your house. Every twenty years or so, key systems are going to fail. We're starting to see that in our, in our schools, hence the increase in maintenance supplies. On electricity, there's a sizable increase on the supply side. We do shop, meaning we put out to bid or the market the generation portion, so we do shop that and just don't take the ever-source standard rate for generation. But on the supply side, which we have no choice of carrier, it's the same supply-side charges you see in your home electricity bill, we feel that too as a school district. Natural gas, we're bringing down, that's based on usage and rate. We're just not seeing the usage we used to, and the market rate has been favorable, allowing us to bring that down. Textbook, library books for the materials, again, this was an area that we cut numerous staff requests, just couldn't do it, didn't do it, to help offset some of these other areas. We do see a modest increase in library books. Again, I can tell you, assure you, this request was sizably more, but it's been scaled back to support nonfiction and multilingual learner resources for our libraries. On six ninety, other supplies and materials, this is a reduction from last year due to the completion of go-bags, so we budgeted roughly, I think it was like thirty-five thousand dollars in last year's budget for the emergency go-bags. We spent that money, they're out in the schools, being distributed, our staff are being trained on those. So we took that out of the budget, but we put back in ten thousand dollars for a vape detection pilot at Watford and High School in Clark Lane, where we will pilot roughly ten vape detectors in key areas of the building. If that pilot works out, we will scale that further in the years to come as that remains challenging for our administrators. Equipment, there's a detailed breakdown of the technology request in your budget book, but some highlights are the following. We were asked to move Chromebooks, the Chromebooks replacement cycle, from capital back to operating. You might recall a year or two ago, the RTM asked us to put that in capital, and we were asked to put that back in operating. So that is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar increase to equipment. There's also forty-two thousand dollars for diving board for the high school swimming pool. There's also new pre-K furniture budgeted at thirty-five thousand dollars for the new classroom at Quaker Hill, and there's a twenty-six thousand dollar increase roughly to support the Watford High School Career and Technical Education Program and really support our career pathways work. And that really falls into two areas. It's materials to support our manufacturing program and really to change over some of the aging culinary equipment, really moving more from a residential home economics model of culinary to more of a commercial model, making sure that our kids, if that's their passion and they want to pursue that post-high school, that they leave us employable or trainable as this is a very big hospitality region and really shifting that. We have a dynamic teacher we've hired for that program, and the teacher is doing some wonderful things. So some of that twenty-six thousand is to support changing over some of that equipment. Again, if you were on the elected officials tour, you've got a primer on that. Dues and fees primarily reflective of some rate adjustments, and we're able to bring that down to decrease of just under five thousand dollars. Not going to beat a dead horse. Three main budget drivers, the rest of the budget is a modest point-zero-eight percent increase. We always try to repurpose resources, including funding before asking for more. As I said, many, many staff requests for staff, equipment, materials, supplies, books were eliminated or reduced to mitigate these three drivers. As I end, I always like to show a couple of slides that are kind of standard. Now more than ever, our community partnerships are valuable and they pay dividends. Our partners have helped us immensely during this time, and I know they will continue as we move forward. Some of our town departments are some of our most valuable partners. Other partnerships like the ones with UCFS and our school-based health clinics improve outcomes for kids and families. I want to thank our entire district team for their incredible and tireless efforts each and every day. We do great things for kids. The work matters, you matter. I want to thank our team and want everyone to know how proud I am of all that this team has done, and it's a privilege to present this proposed budget to the board on their behalf. Let me reiterate that we carefully consider every expense, we look for ways to reduce costs, we'll still maintain equality in this environment, and it is more important than ever before for school districts to be strategic about their spending and ensure that resources are being used wisely. I look forward to our discussion. I thank the board for their support through the development of this budget over the course of the winter, and more importantly, I thank the board for their constant and vigilant support of the school district throughout the course of the year. I'm going to hand it back over to the chair.
There's some water.
Yes. Lot of talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next portion of our meeting is for our board members to ask questions, make comments. Remember, no recommendations, this is for information purposes, discussion purposes. We'll go section by section, so we'll start with instructional services. And if you want more time and I'm moving on, give me a signal before I move on. Any questions?
I have questions, but they're more in the presentation, but I guess I'll ask it here and see. The multi-language requirement from the state, do we know how that's reflected here? I know we repurposed some people, but like we have this year and then going forward, I imagine there's going to be a cost salary-wise and maybe in fourth material? I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, it's a great, a great.
And do we, is there any offset from the state to say, here's some money to help you out with that? They know that's.
Well, the last part's the easiest. The answer's no.
I expect that.
But no, it's a good question. So I think this slide really captures the projections for next year and the realities really of this year. So what we did is we took this year's students, fast-forward to, you know, to next year. One thing I didn't even mention is the red note at the bottom, that we are also required to provide ongoing support on an as-needed basis for two years to students who reach English proficiency.
For maintenance.
If they, exactly, if they need additional support. So when you look at these service hours and you combine this with our current staffing levels, you can see how challenging and difficult that is. These service hours come from the, from the feds and the State Department of Education. You know, we've had a great partnership these last two years. We're currently the second year with consultants from LEARN, which we budgeted under contracted services, and they were heavily involved in the recommendation for the staffing model of next year. On the teacher fund, Mr. Merriman, on the, you know, when we were reducing two FTEs at Watford High School to essentially fund the two FTEs of the multilingual teacher, so that's really essentially a wash in terms of dollars and cents. You can see the classroom FTE at the elementary level we're going to use for pre-K. What does cost money in this budget from a staffing perspective, specific to multilingual, is the recommendation of two tutors to support certified teachers. Tutors are roughly thirty-seven thousand five hundred, hence a total cost of seventy-five thousand for two tutors. So when you look at service hours like this, or a model where you have a teacher and a tutor, the tutor might be pushing into the classroom, helping the student in math class or social studies or science, and the T-Sol teacher might be in a different classroom providing pull-out services. That T-Sol teacher could be at an ML planning meeting for three, four, or five hours, and the tutor's providing services to the kid, and any of those could be vice versa.
Follow-up, if I could, please. You kind of mentioned this, and I just want to make it, just so everyone knows, the goal of the multi-language is to have the child be proficient in English, right? It's not to teach to class and.
Correct, yeah. So we, we are under pressure from the state for kids to progress through English proficiency. So when you see this slide here, that's a great question, I'm glad you asked that. You know, we'll take the youngster at Quaker Hill we saw during the elected officials tour, a kindergartner speaks Mandarin. Our goal is for that student to progress at a fairly, you know, as rapid a pace, and I'm going to ask Caroline to bring up a different slide. Slide sixty-three, Caroline. So language acquisition takes time. So yes, Craig, to your point, our goal is to get kids to progress out of ML services. That's the expectation of the state, that's the expectation we have. When you look at language acquisition up there now, one of our backup slides, social language acquisition occurs at a much rapid, a much more rapid pace. How's your day? What's the weather outside? What did you have for lunch? All of that's social language. And I'm not an expert in that, we have some experts in the room, I'm not going to call out yet. Academic language, like what does the volume of a cube mean? What is a hypothesis? All those academic words that we all take for granted because we speak English, that language acquisition rate is roughly five to seven years on average for a child to become proficient in that. So this is a multi-year investment, for sure. So yes, this is to get kids to quote, "graduate" out of ML services to where they're proficient and can perform in a school and life environment, and that's why they still build in that two-year check-in, services-as-needed out of. We are not, the goal is not to create what some might call dual-language schools, which is a whole different model where some districts might employ Spanish teachers and kids are getting instruction in Spanish who were already proficient in English. This is not dual-language.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
No, it's a great, and I'm, thank you. It's almost like we set it up, but we didn't. It's almost like we set it up, but we didn't. Great question. Gina and.
Set it fast.
Okay. Principals, good? All right. Billy, I know, is living this.
Are there any questions, other questions or comments from the board on instructional services?
Actually.
Marsha?
On. Yes, on, on page 18. It says in-school suspension.
Yep.
Zero. On page 25, it says in-school suspension two.
Correct.
Can you explain that?
Yes, I can. Several years ago, beginning with FY '23, we moved in-school suspension salaries from instructional services, which is more in the area of certified staff who are teaching kids. In-school suspension people do not have to be certified and typically aren't certified. We put them in support services.
Oh, okay, that's support.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, and that, that gives another question, talking about those tutors for the ML program. Are they certified staff or non-certified staff?
Not necessarily certified. They, they, put it this way, they don't have to be certified by law. I can tell you that we would, they're in high demand. So it's tough to find TSAL certified people who want to be a tutor. It's not unheard of. We would certainly strive for people who have a teaching background or maybe certify in anything because then they have an understanding of child development and instruction. So our goal will be to make sure that we get instructionally competent people for those positions.
Any other questions under instructional services?
I just had one about talented and gifted. So we are under obligation from the state to sort of vet them out. However, there are no tal, we're not actively engaged and we haven't been.
Correct. So in FY '24, the board cut talented and gifted programming. We, as you pointed out, we are required to test. We do that. There's testing supplies in this budget, for example. When the board eliminated the talented and gifted teaching positions, there was a hefty investment in after-school enrichment opportunities. Each school, each elementary got roughly 33, $3,333. There's 10 grand total, somebody gets an extra dollar, to beef up our after-school enrichment programming. And that is in our budget.
And this, this plus-one computers technician, is that the software systems administrator?
So yes, so I think you're now in support services.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which I'm fine to go to.
Is everybody ready to move on?
I already flipped there.
Yep.
Sure. All right. Now we're in support services. Craig, did you have a question?
I probably do. No, that was my question was the plus-one computer. So I assume that's the software.
Yeah, it's, it's that exact position. We're, we're just seeing, so two factors. One is proliferation of devices. We're now a one-to-one environment. I'm not going to put Mark on the spot, but if somebody wanted to know how many devices we have online every day, he would be able to answer that way. Marsha?
Sure.
What is it?
The average is between 4,500 and 5,000.
So every day roughly 5,000 devices are coming online. It takes people to do that. This is an increase in complexity and work since the pandemic, one-to-one device environment. The other factor in this, you might recall, this used to be a shared service with the town. And it was a larger department with three more people in it. That shared service was split a number of years ago. So we did, in that exchange, did lose some people power in that because we had access to eight people, now we have access to five people. So this, this position would help us continue to support maintaining all the technology that we have.
What's the size of our support staff for, for IT?
Yeah, I'll let Mark run it down. Obviously, Mark's the director. Don't use names, but maybe walk through the positions.
Sure, so currently there's five people.
Okay.
I could go to break it down.
Yeah, go by, go by like position.
I was just curious.
Sure, so we have a director, we have a network engineer. We have our power school SIS data warehouse administrator. And then we have two technicians. And then we have our auditorium help desk, sort of other person. That's sort of split services between high school auditorium, you know, theater stuff and then art department.
Any other questions under support services?
I have page 22. I had asked for a breakdown and I thank you, Tom, for giving us a breakdown of the maintenance, staffing and custodian staffing. Now, do we still, I notice sometimes on Friday reports, it says that, you know, some of the maintenance goes to the town too.
Correct.
We, we cover some town maintenance as well as our school building maintenance.
We do. And I'm going to have Caroline bring up a couple of slides. I'm going to ask her to bring up slide 39 and then 40. But let's do 39 first.
So my question is, how much of, do we get reimbursed for that? What kind of deal do we have here?
Sure.
That we're, are we paying for towns, for the town, is the town getting a deal from us? Or what's, what's happening there?
Well, it's all one pot of money to the taxpayer, so it's a collaborative effort. But in terms, what Ms. Ben Vannoudy is talking about is it was asked for, what is the breakdown of our maintenance and custodian staffing? You can see that on this slide, the operation from a director to a supervisor, to secretarial support, and then by positions. To Marsha's question of support to the town, if you want to flip to the next slide, Caroline. So we roughly average 214 work orders a year for town departments. This obviously represents, when work order could be 30 minutes, it could be six days. So it's hard to quantify that in terms of hours in every given year. But roughly over the last 20 years, as you can see on the slide, we average roughly 214 work orders a year for the town. When there's a project that requires parts or materials, the town, town government pays for the materials and the supplies. The labor, including any overtime, is, is absorbed by the Board of Education.
Okay. Is there any way to quantify that amount of money? Or a rough estimate?
I don't know because again.
You're not sure on the hours.
Some of these could take 30 minutes, some of these could take 10 minutes. Oh, there's a loose wire in an outlet.
Yeah.
Or no, the whole circuit board's done.
Yeah.
You can tell I'm an idle electrician. But, you know, it's hard to, hard to quantify that. And again, you know, rate, you know, rate-wise, different positions make different money. But it's, you know, it's a sizable, and it's a good thing. Because if our staff didn't do this work, they'd be calling contractors and they do have to call contractors for certain jobs.
Right.
Which would be more money to the taxpayer.
I understand it. I just am concerned about our 6% increase.
Understood.
Are there ever situations where the Board of Ed requests the town to come and help them out?
Yeah, absolutely, yes. That's a good, that's a good question. Obviously, if you look at the other side of it, Wreckin' Parks grounds, crew maintains our school grounds, so they do, you know, all the, anything to do with landscaping, mowing, things like that. And then public works from time to time, from time to time, will help us with, with certain projects as well. So it's, you know, and our IT departments, as I mentioned, were a shared service, but they still collaborate on many things. When we can help them out with an IT project, we do. When they, when we need them to help us out, i.e. for, for example, the security camera project, which we're all, all very familiar with. Town IT department has been integral to that project. It has really been a great help in making that happen. And our HR departments work very closely together. While we don't necessarily do work for each other, there's a collaborative effort there. So it's, it's definitely a healthy, I think, a positive relationship.
But we split IT and, and help and human services.
Years ago, yeah.
Years ago. Is, is the cost substantial enough? Do you think that we should split maintenance as well?
I wouldn't recommend it, but I'm not the decision maker. But I would recommend that.
All right.
Anything else under support services? Okay, moving on to employee.
I do have one. On page, same page, page 22, overtime custodial for the elementary was at 20.79%. Don't they do most of their, is that because of summer work or why is that so?
Yeah, it, it could be a variety of things. You know, overtime at, for custodians could be cleaning up from the school that back-to-school night, for example, gets over and there's cleanup to do from that. It could be, you know, there was a bad rainstorm the next day and, you know, this area is flooded and they've got to wipe that out so kids can enter the building. It could be a, a variety of reasons for, for that. While, yes, up 20% based on trend and usage. If you go back to prior years, you can kind of see what the trend has been. It's a roughly 5,900 hour increase.
We all set with, all right, moving on to employee benefits? Any questions or comments? Craig?
Is this our, our final numbers on the insurance? I know sometimes we get towards the end of the cycle or we'll get, like, the real numbers will drop for us.
Yeah, so right now, these, this is the real number, so.
Yeah, and you said it's based off the 20%, what you were seeing, correct, right?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, we're self-insured. This is based on 12 to 18-month trend data. This is a real money. I, I can tell you the area that we're seeing, the pinch point on health insurance is in the area of what's called stop-loss insurance. Let me, let me unpack what that means. So if a particular individual on our health plan hits $175,000 in claims, that's where stop-loss insurance kicks in. And an insurance company actually then begins to pay those claims. We've had some very high claimants in recent years. A million plus for one person or two people or three people or four people. So the cost for that stop-loss insurance has gone from 3 million to 4.8 million. So that's a million-eight increase in stop-loss over, say, the last three or four years. So we are looking at some options on health insurance to bring it down. One being, can we get other stop-loss insurance companies to take a bite at us? And will it be lower than what we're projecting? That's one avenue. And the other avenue, I don't want to go into too much detail on, but looking at, are there other ways we can do health insurance? And I'll just kind of leave it at that.
Any other questions or comments on employee benefits? Moving on to contracted services.
Can I just say one more thing about health insurance before we leave it? To wrap up my comments, Greg, my hope, and I think our collective hope by May RTM meeting, is that we can bring that line down. That would be the goal. I don't, it's not going to happen in February, the next three weeks that we have together. But by the May RTM.
I see what you're saying. You'll have more realistic numbers about that.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Contracted services, questions or comments?
Page 32, contracted services athletics, is that the trainer?
That's the athletic trainer that we contract with currently. The contracted rate they gave us for next year is 79,000. Roughly market, if you wanted to employ your own, which this board discussed last year, would be 75-ish plus benefits, you'd be over 100. So it still makes financial sense to contract that out.
But then we would have to look for our own subs and things like that.
Correct, with, correct. With the current contract.
You have someone that's going to come in.
If our trainer is sick or incapacitated, there's at least a hope that they can pull from somewhere in their organization to make sure we have coverage.
Anything else in that section? Moving on to transportation. Everybody good?
Question, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Craig, glad you came tonight.
Make you need more, Greg. That's my job. So transportation, are we still bound to have a seat for every kid? Even though they may or may not take the bus?
Yeah, so there's really two, two components to that question. One being, every child has a right to transportation. Obviously, we know not every child in Waterford uses transportation. The challenge with Waterford, it is a geographically large town. So we try to keep our bus runs to 40 minutes and under-ish. Some days it's maybe a little over that, some days it might be a little under that. Based on the geography of town, so if you're Joe Citizen or Jane Citizen, you might see, wow, there's only 15 kids on that bus. Could we cut that bus? Or could we cut this bus or that bus? But that's going to push your runs to close to 50 minutes, 55 an hour. So yes, there, children have a right by statute to access transportation. But the geographic expansiveness of Waterford makes it challenging when you're looking at runs and wanting to keep them at a reasonable.
Yeah, those changes ripple through the whole.
Right.
That's something we had a discussion on last year too, that people would not be comfortable with having their kids on buses for 15 minutes or more.
Of course.
That would be the next thing we would be dealing with. Also on transportation. Moving on to insurance. Everybody good? Communication. Yeah, I think so. Communication. Okay, moving on to tuition.
I would say that it's nice to see that our numbers keep going down. So we're not paying as much tuition to other schools, which is an excellent.
Craig, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I guess it's more for comment. And when, when we talk about tuition and we show the drop, we still take in money, but it goes to the town, right? For, and it might be nice to see that for comparative purposes, to show an overall savings.
It's, it's modest. I think, I know you know what you're talking about for people if they're watching, the tens of thousands watching tonight.
That was a super.
We signed three agreements with three area towns for them to send eighth graders here, Norwich, Franklin, and Basra. Pre-pandemic, we were seeing pretty good growth in the number of Norwich students attending the Waterford Public Schools. They grew up to like 14 or 15. Pandemic obviously impacted that. Subsequently, the Norwich Board of Ed voted to take Waterford off their list. We do still have partnership agreements with Franklin and Basra. And we do still have a limited number of Norwich students. You know, off the top of your head, Caroline?
I think we're at five.
Five.
So we have one Basra student as well.
All right, so we have five or six students, roughly about 12,500 apiece. And you're right, that tuition money does go to the town of Waterford by statute.
And that starts at eight, grade, grade eight rather? That's it? Or it can be any grade at this point?
Nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Okay.
They can come in as ninth grade.
End of eight, end of eight, okay, got it.
Yeah.
And that's something that you would never consider opening up otherwise? Or it just gets into legalities with buses? Or we wouldn't have to bus them, that would be the parents, right?
I think, you know, when you look at the enrollment projection increases for the elementaries, they were built for 420. If the enrollment projection specialists are right, and with the pre-K, two pre-K rooms in each building, I would not recommend we pursue K-8 tuition students. I mean, that option obviously exists. Parents can approach us and they can pay versus the town they're living in. So I would, you know, I think middle school, if that's something the board wanted to explore, could certainly have that conversation. You know, and we can re-canvass the K-8 districts in the region. It was about six years ago that we approached the K-8 districts in Eastern Connecticut. Some did at that time, some didn't. But maybe re-canvassing may not be a bad idea, but might be a good topic for a future board agenda.
Anything else on tuition? Other purchase services? Everybody good? Instructional supplies?
I just have a, no, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Slow on the draw, it's a minute. On page forty-six, the, the top line, the top two lines say travel. What's the difference between travel and transportation? Why are they separated?
Yeah, so this is mileage for staff per contracts. So this is IRS mileage reimbursement.
Thank you. All right, instructional supplies. Elsa?
I just have a, a comment. I, I know we've really been cutting on this, but as, as a science person, I'm a little, you know, I'd like to make sure that we're funding tech and science appropriately with up-to-date equipment, and, you know, I don't want them working with twenty-year-old microscopes and, you know, so that, that's just a, a comment of mine. I wanna make sure that your science, chemistries, physics are, are being supported appropriately.
Yeah, and I'm glad you asked that question. This budget, pre, last several years, I'm not sure it's been every year, we have invested in some of that equipment. Kirk, I, I'm gonna throw it to you in a minute to maybe elaborate a little bit, but I'm not sure if it's under instructional supplies or equipment, but there is continued investment in, uh, you know, um, industry-grade microscopes, industry-grade microscope cameras. What we're finding right now is we're sharing microscopes between the marine science classes and the regular biology classes. Salt, and the salt water and everything else, this, there is an investment in this budget to invest in more microscopes. So, Kirk, I don't know if you wanna elaborate on that a little?
Yeah, we, we put in for one more set to, uh, of microscopes, so each class is fully equipped. We were sort of sharing the ones with the marine science, but salt water can tend to ruin a lot of things, so we wanna have its own designated set. We also put in for some digital balances, they are expensive, but if we don't have the amount of them, as you transport them, you know, chances are they're gonna get damaged, right? So, it is an expense, but it'll last long-term and, and cut down on the, the wear and tear of, of expensive equipment. We also had to run some biotech supplies. Um, in the past, we used to have a grant, we don't have access to that grant right now. And for the marine science courses, it's really getting along with readers and everything because they do so much work with Project Go and so forth. So we definitely, uh, increased our, our supplies and equipment for science, coupled with the new curriculum. And a lot of new courses being offered.
And I guess, you know, I, I'm kind of concerned, every year I have the same concerns about, um, about that topic, because we do, we do take care of our STEM needs, and we are purchasing, um, nonfiction books and books for multilingual, or language learners, but, you know, what about literature? What about, you know, what about all the stuff that the teachers have been asking for for year upon year upon year that we just keep saying no to? What, what are the opportunities for getting good literature? Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll throw it to Craig in just a minute. I mean, it's, it's definitely a balancing act, I mean, what, I know we've said we've tried to hold this flat for the last four or five years, but we do continue to invest over four-hundred thousand dollars in next year's budget in this area, so it's not like we're zeroing it out or nothing, and I know that's not what you were saying, but your point is not lost. I think when you go through curriculum manuals, like we did with K-five literacy, with wit and wisdom, feedback from teachers around the amount and quality of those resources has been very positive, but.
Yeah, I was gonna basically say, uh, it's multi-pronged, I appreciate your question immensely. When we have a curriculum renewal, obviously we wanna look at what's the breadth, so, you know, when we had high school English, we, uh, shifted from just a grade nine, ten, eleven, twelve to like in twelve, there's a myriad of different semester opportunities to enrich. That's one level. Another prong would be class, at the, you know, pre-K to eighth level classroom libraries, because, um, within a classroom, you wanna have enough opportunities for students to choose a book on a certain topic, and teachers can kinda curate that, and then they can still have some agency in picking the book, uh, and then come together. And then, um, as Tom has spoken about, really the enhancements of each of the school libraries, and, um, the high school has really gone through its entirety of its collection, uh, and really identified the areas where we need to bolster, um, nonfiction, great literature, in addition to, uh, the books that we, or tried and true stories, maybe in a different language, to hit those, um, learners as well, but that happens in each and every library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else under instructional supplies? Moving on to operation and maintenance of buildings.
I know you've touched on it before, Tom, but on page fifty-five, that name in supplies, that is just everyday supply, it's not replacing a HVAC system or anything like that, or parts or anything like that, that's just the daily routine of Windex and Clorox.
Yeah, all the way up to, um, you know, like I said, we had a key HVAC component.
Right, filters and whatever.
You know, go at, at Clarkly, I mean, at Quicker Hill, that would come out of this, I mean.
Oh, what, it would, the other parts for that?
Conceivably, certain parts, some of it might be under equipment repair, but conceivably, um, you know, filters, you know, we have to change filters every X amount of weeks, hundreds and hundreds of filters. You know, all of those day-to-day maintenance supplies, cleaning supplies that it takes to run five locations. And they're more expensive, and inflation is.
Anything else on maintenance? Uh, moving on to textbooks, library books, and other supplies.
Did I skip water?
What did I skip?
Water sewer.
I thought it was part of.
Oh, okay, was that part of it?
Right.
Just a question on page sixty, and, um, I noticed that the total, you've got it broken down for, for the water usage, um, but if you add up the totals, they're pretty consistent around three thousand for each of the school, but then you added a thousand for great neck. Was that because of the new field and the irrigation system?
Exactly, yes, so part of that project, um,
Just wanted to make sure.
Will be irrigation to support healthier grass on their backfield.
And then, because your sewer bill is reflected upon, it, it depended, dependent upon your water usage, do we have a separate billing system so that that water that is on the irrigation system is not billed for the sewer system?
That I don't know, but I can have that answer for you hopefully Thursday.
Okay.
You're worried about the garden.
Well, no, I'm worried, I'm worried about the fact that you're, you're paying for water that's not going through the sewers.
So your, your question will be, if we're paying more for irrigation for the field, is that gonna result also in an increase in sewer?
Right, because lots of, lots of homeowners will take their garden and separate them from your, uh, from your, uh, meter so that they are not connected to the sewer usage.
Got it. Good news is we haven't installed the irrigation yet, so.
Okay.
We gotta time it, but I will, I'll ask, you know, we'll have an answer for Thursday for sure.
We're in textbooks, library books, and other supplies. Anything else? Sixty-three. Elsa? All right, moving on to athletics. Page sixty-six. All good? Page sixty-eight, equipment. And last section dues and fees. Before we open it up to the audience for any questions or comments, thank you to the board and especially the finance committee, because there was a lot of thoughtful discussion that went on over the last couple of months, and it's appreciated, and it's certainly reflected in the budget that we're looking at tonight. For the audience, rather than go through section by section, I'll just open it up to you, if you have a question or a comment, raise your hand, we'll, we'll just know what's.
Sorry. This is back in the presentation, it had to do with special ed and the increasing number. The criteria for someone to qualify under, under special ed, has that, does that change over, over time, and how, how has that impacted us? I mean, do, do more with the criteria as it is now, or more kids eligible to be classified?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Cause I think that, that, that has obviously a significant impact on the budget overall.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, um, Director by God to, to respond in a minute, so the short answer is yes, the, the, my career, you know, my career, it's, it's certainly changed over time in how we identify those kids. With that said, there's a strict process in place, if you wanna maybe talk a little bit about that.
As far as eligibility goes, there's a three-year evaluation for students who have been identified, um, and there's usually a full-scale evaluation completed, and then you go through the criteria for whatever, whatever exceptionality they had, and if they knew that instructional piece closed those gaps, they were still qualified. For students who are referred, um, we have a pretty intense intervention program that the students do go through, just to make sure, um, they get the instruction they need, and if there's a lack of instruction.
But am I correct in, uh, saying that our numbers in SED have decreased?
Ask Caroline to bring up a chart here.
They have an increase. No, they haven't.
We had that kinda curved up and.
I have a chart on that, believe it or not.
I thought you said nineteen percent in the beginning.
Yeah, uh, uh, slide forty-three, Caroline. Just to show you kinda historically, our, our percentage, um, has increased, total number of kids has not, um, I don't know if you can hide that. You know, you look at four-thirty-eight, right, for this current fiscal year, and you say, jeez, well, we had four-thirty-seven in fiscal year nineteen, but we also had three-hundred more kids.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the number of students hasn't drastically fluctuated over the years, but as enrollment has dropped, it becomes a bigger percentage
Right.
Of the student population. So this is, you know, what, a twelve- or thirteen-year look back, um, you know, that, that kinda gives you that. Again, as, as Gina pointed out, and as Craig can attest, we have, and our principals certainly, we have a robust intervention, uh, system, there's stat teams in place at each school, you see our teachers nodding their heads, they're a part of that process. Our stat process, especially on the data end of things, has, has been revamped this year, um, not that our teachers need more to do, but the amount of data that they're now tracking at the classroom level and bringing those meetings, so we don't over-identify kids. On the ML side, we're having ML planning team meetings, where we're going through data on our multilingual learners to make sure we're not confusing their language acquisition rate with, jeez, this kid's got a learning problem, so kinda ruling that out, is this a language issue, or is this a special ed issue? So there's a lot that goes on, um, to that, but you can certainly see, while the number hasn't changed drastically over the last, say, ten years, it is a larger percentage of our student population. Thanks, Caroline.
Okay, I will now open it up to our audience. Anybody have any questions or comments? Going once? Thank you, and, and remember, we are meeting again this coming Thursday, weather permitting, at six o'clock. Uh, we'll, there'll be a brief overview, and then time for questions and comments again, of course. So at this time, um, then I will ask for a motion.
So moved, through John?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye-bye.
All right, thanks, everybody.